We all? Good evening, folks. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is now 5:01. And could someone please lead us in a prayer?
Absolutely.
Father God, we just thank you for this time to come together as community members and members of this department, Lord God. We pray everything we decide here tonight will be done in the Christ-like manner. Father, I lift up the this fire department's members and everyone involved, Lord God, I pray for a hedge of protection around them, Lord God. And Father, we just thank you for this opportunity, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will do our road calls of Mr. Ricks.
Present.
Mr. Kazanay.
Here.
Mr. Beck East.
Here.
Mr. Jack.
Here.
Myself, so we have one, I'd like to welcome the members of the administration, everyone from PMI and everybody in the audience and folks that's out on social media. First topic on the agenda is going to be the pool of the minutes of the December 10th regular meeting, so we'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll say.
Would anybody like to have a discussion? I hear nothing, so let's vote all in favor.
All in.
Stay on. Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion carries. Next up is the treasurer, Mr. Raymond.
Okay, and any account, we have seven accounts, they have written down operating funds, they have accrued over $523,236,30 cents, sinking fund, of course, maintaining at $1,560.24 cents. The money market, $458,274.94 cents, and the treasury bill was $254.59.39 cents for a total of $1,234.86.80 cents. And in the previous balance in the money market, we had $449 as of this previous day, $446.40 cents, with the average balance of $332,634.40 cents. And the previous bank and operating fund, we had $339,733.88 cents, with an average balance of $635,445.13 cents. We had credits of $856,428.71 cents, plus seventy credits, fifty-one digits, at $654,033.19 cents, with an ending balance of $542,949.19 cents. We, in the second fund, of course, we maintained in our balance at 115, and the previous balance in the money market was $449,446.40 cents, with one credit, $258,000, and one debit, $250,000, with an ending balance of $458,274.94 cents. Interest paid was $828, with an average balance of $232,634.41 cents. And this concludes the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Does that include the money that we just received? That 1.6 million is in there?
Yes.
Chairman, just may I supplement that just for a second?
Sure.
If you look at your receipts and disbursements, we talked about this going throughout the year, if you look at sign seventeen, we collected 4,203,060 dollars, or 124 percent. We dispersed in total disbursements for me in 63,921, for a projected surplus of 139,138, and we had estimated right around 150.
Yep.
So we hit pretty close to our target. This will require the budget to be amended formally to follow the illa tolerances since we're more than 5% over in expenditures.
Got that, yep.
But other than that, we finished the year well off.
Yeah, and we're over on receipts by 20, and there's.
Over by receipts on 24 percent and over on expenditures by 20, just short of 21.
Just short of 21, so.
But we had estimated about 150, we came in right at 140, so.
You did what?
There it is.
So we want to do that, I want to have the amendments on the February regular meeting.
Okay.
And so I'll try to see if you can help us get that.
Yes.
All right. So we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Do we have a second?
Say.
I'll say. Any further discussion on treasurer? I hear none, so let's vote all in favor of accepting the treasurer's report, say aye, and opposed, motion carries. Chief, you up for the next two topics, employee recognition and the chief's report?
All righty, I appreciate it. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday, Christmas, New Years. I don't think we had anything major as far as incidents to report related to holidays, which is good. Employee recognition, Dustin Morrow has been confirmed as a permanent full-time firefighter on 12-5. Elizabeth Sundine is a part-time employee, she's been here for four years as of December 10th. Lance Lopez, four years as of the 26th, and Bradley Polk, Bradley Polk, two years as of the 4th. He's a part-timer firefighter, I am too basic. As y'all know, Mark May is out sick, Chief Gillett is out on some personal leave, so I've got all their notes kind of thrown at me, so we'll just go through some of those things. There's no particular order, but I'll go through some of their lists that we consolidated. Call volume, year-to-date, we're at 52 calls currently year-to-date. Last year, we totaled out at about 1,700. Let's see, we did, in December, we were 100% covered as far as both med units. In December, we received three mutual aid calls, Acadian assisted on an MVA that required multiple med units. District 4 assisted on an MVA that required multiple med units, and District 1 assisted on a structured fire that was on Highway 19 in Inbridge. And we gave one mutual aid call to Slottell, District 1, for Acadian. So that's call volume from last year, and again, year-to-date, we're at 52 calls. We did, speaking of calls, we formally transitioned from NIFERS, which is a fire reporting system, to NIRA, which the state of Louisiana adopted recently, so. That for the layperson means absolutely nothing for us as far as reporting, it really doesn't mean much, but it's just a type of reporting system that each state, I guess, has the opportunity to adopt, so. The previous one used coding and numbers, this one is just wording, so if it's a structured fire, it's a structured fire, it's not an 11 or 11-12.
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, so it just, it should make it simple, we did do that transition recently, so. Let's go through this list, again, no particular order during the month of December. Taylor Tassin received a firefighter award at the VFW, he was recognized by their men and women at the VFW, and we were nominated. We nominated Taylor Tassin, he's taken on a lot of tasks here at District 3, and we felt that it was appropriate to recognize him through the VFW. So we appreciate them keeping us in mind and including us. We did our Santas through the neighborhoods, we handed out candy and collected canned goods and toys for toys for tots, we did that during the month of December. Paramedic school started, CJ and Elijah are both enrolled in paramedic school, they are doing absolutely wonderful from what I hear.
They, did they go to class yet?
They, yeah, so they are both on that wonderful two-year ride of becoming paramedics. Levifen, we introduced Levifen on our med units, it's a drug that can be used in many situations, but primarily post-cardiac arrest. It basically helps keep the heart going and enables us to transport patients to a hospital and hopefully have a better chance of recovery after a cardiac arrest. Continued our drill tower trainings with District 1, High Rise and Hose Pats was the last topics, we're working on our ethical ethics, that is due in, Teresa, you set a deadline? Okay, so, yeah, we have ethics that's required by all of our employees, of course, y'all are also required as board members, so we remind y'all about that.
We're gonna just, we, if we don't get it done, they've caught it, the commissioners, two years ago, a couple of the states get it done, and it ended up in the audit. So it affects our audit, so, you know, just, I think it's gotta be next month?
We set our own deadlines.
Thirty days.
It's gotta happen before the audit, for sure. The audit is in March. It's already started.
This one's due early, and then you have your financial disclosures, you just do right around tax time. Balance, the big one, because you get a personal penalty for that.
Yeah, it's like $1,500 if you kill to do that.
No, we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
You could ask for former commissioner, never what about the penalties?
So, is, did you, he got access to email? Did he send a link and email to everyone? So check your email, if you don't, I guess, come up here, some shirts and, okay?
Secondary harassment is a requirement, we're working on that, so we had that training, that's also required at the beginning of the year. We're working on VFIS, which is our driver's training, which is required each year, our employees do any incident command training, which is required. We're continuing our drill tower trainings with District 1, which is mutually trained, that's required. We're working on sending employees to the lift conference, which is in Baton Rouge for training. We are working on FEDA training, scheduling FEDA training with, it used to be LSU, and that will do those monthly. We'll look at some new extrication equipment that popped up as far as some of the calls we had recently, so we'll be visiting some of that stuff as well. We met with some employees who had some great ideas as far as EMS and medical training, we are working not only with an orientation and onboarding process for all of our employees, but also for paramedics. It's important to us to know that the paramedics that are on the streets are competent enough to do the job, and so that's going to entail some skills as well as some onboard training, which we've never had truly in place, so. That'll, that's coming down the pipe as well. Also looking up some additional recertification classes. I and Chief Gillett will be signing up for the chief's. There's a chief's academy that goes on through the Fire Chief Association, it's in Slottell this year, but I'll be on round two. My Gillett will be on round one, so it's three days of, you know, guest speakers, there's an assignment that we do, present to a panel of chiefs, and then you'll receive a nice plaque, a pin, and all that stuff to be recognized for that chief's academy.
Gotta know some of the speakers.
Yeah, I heard they were all right.
They're all right.
So, yeah, I enjoyed it, it was Baton Rouge last, last year, and I thought it was very informative, and very, just the networking in itself was beneficial. Strategic planning, we are working on that, strategic planning, to continue, you know, worked on strategic planning the last year, we come up with any bullet points, and we're starting to pinpoint those specific eight points.
Do you have a specific report out for it later, is that part of your agenda?
I don't have the very detailed specific report, but we're working on some of those factors. We've been with other fire districts to discuss the, to discuss the process on buildings and on fire stations, where do we start? I've never purchased or worked on rebuilding or adding to some of these fire stations, so why not learn from some other fire chiefs who have done there, been there, done that? So we do have, I don't have a date yet, but we're working with chief Stein, District 8, Nabita, who's part of the building and fire station, and of course, District 4 and 1 have built two or three in the last couple of years, so.
So is 12, or so is 13.
Yeah, 13's finishing up on one as well, so we certainly would rather learn from them. District 8 has offered to come here, actually walk with us through the building, and kind of give us some ideas of some of the, some of the stuff that they went through with their building, so. I just assumed have some of those chiefs come in and, and then kind of point us in the right direction. In a sense, trying to reinvent anything when they've done it already. Did you want me to wait on this?
I tell you what, one, one of you might, they may be questions specifically to the strategic.
Okay.
So, yeah, just move still.
Okay. So, yeah, do you have a, we're working on a meeting with eight, we had structure maintenance, we have three structures, they came in and maintenance on this, Med 33, that reserve med unit. We have the radio installed, this is today, I tried to get the med unit set up through the state, apparently there's all kind of other stuff that we need to make sure we're in play before it can fully be in service. So stickers, every light on there has to be fully functioning, and it has to have a radio and some other stuff on it that we were, we were needing, so. We're working on that, I got a quote in my email from sticker people, I didn't look at it yet, but I'm hoping to get that in at least by next week, and I think that will be the hurdles that we need to get that truck fully in service, so. That's, that's where we're all ready to go. We formally did the title and paperwork with the notary for the med unit we donated to District 11, so that's done, it's theirs officially with the resolution attached, so that's good to go. I think that's it as far as all of Thor, Tassin has just a little bit of an update of some of the things he was working on as far as fire prevention bureau, so I would yield to him and let him have some of my time and discuss some of the stuff that he's done.
Basically, you wanted to update all on some process that we're going through right now, on building out the first two sides, so I can go out and do inspections, and use that software to do electronics. Some more classes of education on bringing them, working on, and figuring out what materials I'll need, so we can go out and start inspections, definitely by next week.
Really, that's something.
So I'll have it be here. So I'll have a report throughout the year, helping work on more things and venture out in the fire prevention area. And that's about it, with a little update in the process.
So, does there's anything that the board could do for you in the fire prevention? Is there anything you need from us?
No, I don't know, I'm still working out all the things on the future type of things.
We've got, what types of inspection do we have, boom?
Light-based inspections, so basically just a general safety hazard for the occupants of the building.
Okay, for residents, residents or?
Commercial.
Okay, that's what I'm.
The whole business is higher.
Okay, and.
Now that takes the place of the fire marshal.
For life's sake.
Yeah.
Certain businesses are qualified under the fire marshal, I still have to do it, but I can join them on their inspection and fire and shadow them on those specific parties.
Yeah, and certainly doing this sort of thing is great for public relations.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to encourage you to promote the department as you're out doing inspections. You know, that's, look, the more the public is out there seeing us and doing a good job, they're gonna remember us, that's a valid point, hopefully.
I got a question on that, I'm sorry, will you?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you need anything in the field that you don't currently have that would make your job easier or more professional?
I still got, I have a list of things I need, we have some, and some we have to acquire, but it's stuff we can find around here, I just gotta put a little kit together. Like I said, if I need anything, I'll come to the chiefs and let them know.
Okay, good deal, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for the report.
Thank you, yeah.
Is it Mike?
That is it.
That's all I have from chief's report. Okay, Ben Rose, you got the floor?
Since it's the beginning of the year, we had our meeting last week, and we're just brainstorming for the year, for the upcoming events, to put ourselves out there as a community, and then to the firefighters, we got a couple of stuff that we've been kind of deciding when we want to do it, and getting a clunder of events. So that way, we have targeted dates for community services, or community involvement with the fire department.
Any questions from this room? Yeah. So. Do you, is the Horace on Fire need anything from the board?
At the moment, I believe so, we're just still trying to pinpoint, Monte Ross, you know, could we, we'd like to maybe do some kind of dinner, like the last, you know, just little, just like that, just trying to make.
I would really encourage the Horace on Fire to consider doing some sort of a chicken dinner thing. I know probably can't do fried chicken, we don't have the equipment, but the people of the community, even some of the younger folks, but I know the law of the. Even some of the younger folks, but I know a lot of the old folks always bring back the chicken dinners that were done at the fire department. We did them twice a year, twice a year, and it was something that really clicked with the community. I don't know so much about driving in a bunch of revenue from it, sure you would, but it's more of. Back tying back to that community, touching that, that memory.
And that's one of the points that we talked about was, um, not necessarily asking the public for the community for help monetary. But actually hearts on fire and the fire department giving back to them.
Yeah.
And we were thinking of something like, um, what they used to do was dinners.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe some type of, um. Competition, I guess there's used to be competitions amongst the fire departments, maybe looking into that, the logistics of all, of all that. But, um, having us in the community more now that we have a whole year that we can. Plan hopefully maybe once a month, we can incorporate something in the community.
That'd be good, just maybe get a chance.
Maybe, maybe if one of these dinners we could tie to some sort of charity or something of that maybe.
Oh, we, we, back in the day, that was raw volunteer fire department, that's how they generated the revenue. Uh. If they wanted to, um, put the proceeds to something, that's their organization. I was looking at it more of getting back, touching that memory, the community's memory. There's certain things, of course, we can never do again, bingo, because it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, right.
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, with the Knights of Columbus, we do fish and chicken dinners at this church. And we had a lot of turnout, we made a lot of money off those dinners, so it's a very popular thing.
That's what I was saying, when he said you didn't have the equipment, I said, you got a Catholic church, they got fryers.
We just ordered a new stove and a new oven and it's coming out of Missouri. Uh, getting in here, getting a new guy here.
We gotta sell your.
You gotta do, just talk to father and, and see if you can get some dates and, and you might charge a little rent, but you make that in, in your profit during.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Bros, you have anything? So that concludes the report, which brings us into old business. Excuse me, and we have several resolutions, uh, resolution, old business items, one, two. Um. Three, even I guess, I have some old resolutions that we'll just quickly go through. So the first resolution is, uh, twenty twenty-five zero four four. It's a resolution to approve the inspector incentive payer slash stipend. This is something we voted on December, so it's essentially, uh, memorializing the event. So I'd like to get a motion to approve that resolution.
I have a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Twenty-five four-four.
I'll second you.
Yes, second?
Yes.
Any discussions? I hear none, so let's vote all in favor of adopting that resolution zero four four, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion carries, next resolution up is again a record keeping resolution. It is, uh, twenty twenty-five zero four five and it is to approve the compensation for secretary of the board of commissioners. Uh, I'd like to get a motion to approve. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I hear none, so let's vote all in favor of adopting twenty twenty-five zero four five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion carries. Uh, next resolution is going to be housekeeping again, record keeping. Zero two five, uh, twenty twenty-five zero four six, uh, approve the EMS forgiveness. And as you recall, we had two cases that last month and this was a case number one. Um. It's, it was a local fellow, lived down Lake Road, felt Jaws' memory. All right, so I'd like to get a motion to approve that resolutions, uh, twenty twenty-five zero four six.
Make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five zero.
So we have a second? Okay, all in favor of approving two zero two five zero four six, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion carries, okay. Uh, now we go into the update of the strategic planning. If you had anything else you would like to say.
I would love to, um, so I know you and I have had a conversation last week. We just got, um. Um, discussed what if last year moved forward, kind of what we're looking after this, you want to know, um. Excuse me, also I'm looking for capital improvements is, is a huge, uh, item on that, on that, um. Strategic planning, uh, building repair or building, uh, remodels, whatever that may look like in the future. And of course, we have apparatus that we need to replace. Uh, some of those entries as far as apparatus, we're kind of waiting on P I L, hopefully sooner than later we'll get that number. But I know, um. Besides the P I L factor, we do want to come up with a roundabout number as far as the cost for at least two pieces of apparatus. And then for the cost of some station repair or rebuild, I don't know again what that's gonna look like. Um, and then work on going for bond, I know that's a couple of month process to get that approved.
Three to four.
Yeah, so to get that approved, obviously through the board and then go to council to get that approved. So, uh, we have a goal set of May.
Who's hoping to?
So we would have to act.
I have not, um, to follow up on our discussion, I have not made a request to the parish council to get on the agenda yet. I don't want to get a vote from you before.
Yeah, I think absolutely if we can come up with a roundabout number, I know we're not gonna have the exact details specific to the apparatus types. Uh, we're, we're gonna reconvene that committee out, but I think for us to be able to move effectively is to get that bond process going. Uh, get that approved through council and then we'll, um. Then be able to work on reconvening the apparatus committee to work on looking at truck types. Uh, size, pumps, colors, everything in between. So I think, um, I think we kind of have a game plan as far as that's concerned. Again, we'll be meeting with some of the other districts to figure out where to start as far as station stuff. We've done minor remodels and stuff like that, but we have never done, uh, planning for the future. What are they gonna look like as far as bays, how many bays, uh, bedrooms, bunk rooms, bathrooms? And so those all, all of these factors, we have to kind of get, um, get together and decide what is, what is these stations gonna look like? I know that thirty-two is probably, probably gonna be a primary target, uh, we've certainly outgrown that building, um. And so, again, what does that look like?
I'd like to, as we, I'd like to see us do another good hard look at thirty-one. And see if we can even just, we might even change its footprint to where they have a better, uh, station to live in.
Yeah, we've certainly gotten to a point where we're, we're outgrowing that as far as living quarters. Um, not to get into all the minute details, but some of the ideas too is, uh, the well is probably needs to be upgraded. Um, as far as buying that building, water supply for our water tank. Um, so those are some of the factors that we've looked at as far as adding to those. Some of the other bullet points, I know we have revenue on there, it's a bullet point. I know we have a committee that was working on revenue.
Okay, so on revenue, I could report on that, uh, not a whole lot transpired in, uh, November, December. Other than we found some opportunities, which I'll discuss later, uh, on trying to recover some money. So that will, that has a potential to dramatically increase some revenue floors.
Obviously, the election will, um, we did well with the election portion of that public relations. We are settling, working on, I think the fire prevention bureau is gonna help build on that. I think that EMS training, uh, that we discussed is going to build on that, that is going to not only be internal, uh, EMS training, but they will go do public outreach as well. So the next time somebody's looking for CPR training, AED training, we've already got the CPR dummies in from our opioid grant. We've got a mega code dummy that came in from the opioid grant. We're waiting on a, um, an AED trainer, so we can actually go to these facilities. I know coast, I know the rec district, the schools all have AEDs there, and so we need to be the ones to go to those facilities and do those trainings and, and. And be able to work with those community members, you know? It doesn't make sense to have some outsourced or somebody from out of the area, and we can provide this essential, uh, training classes for these people, so. Again, I'm, I've always been a proponent for, uh, public outreach, public relations and having a relationship with the people. So I, I'm looking forward to that, that little bit and piece of our, our strategic. Um, I don't know if you have any other specific priorities.
With regard to training, I mentioned to, uh. I, uh, hopefully by next meeting, we'll get something together and, uh, I'd like to eventually propose a resolution to, uh. We talk about training all the time for the firefighters and, you know, EMS training and fire training and everything. I would like to see some, some training for our, uh, chief officers, uh, with regards to the national fire academy. I, uh, I think any courses taken up there and any degrees that are got, that are gotten from the national fire academy brings to this department instant credibility. Because they're, they're very valuable and, uh, it could bring a lot of, uh, training and a lot of, uh. Experience to, to our chief office to lead this department. So I'm gonna get, within the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna get with, uh, you and the chief Gilliard to go over the incentives that we have right now and come up with a package that would be. Uh, acceptable to you all, it would be compensation enough to, to send you there to get the, uh, the, the training, the executive fire, executive firearms, executive chief officer training. You know, it's basically like, like a master degree, or it carries way much more weight within the fire terms than, than from any person, in my opinion. That's my opinion, so, uh, that's one of the things I'd like to get, get going for you guys, the chief officers.
Um, we discussed, I would support everyone, uh, education wise that feels that, uh, benefit to the department.
Yeah.
If it requires a resolution, uh, we can do that. I don't know, uh.
If it involves some incentives, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what cheap and it, because it's, you know, like I said, it's like going to get a master degree. It, it requires some time and some traveling, be away from your families to get this accomplished. And, uh, I think that it's a two year, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a two year program where twice a year they'll have to travel to Maryland and spend two weeks up there.
Yes. And, uh.
If we have to pledge the money, then, you know, maybe do it through a resolution. But I would, uh, you know. I would certainly defer to the chief to determine what he needs and you.
Yeah.
Give him the guidance of your experience.
Yeah, the most, most late auto requires that the board approve the fire chief expenses for something like that, so you still have to do a resolution to approve it as part of your budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of those expenses are upfront expenses that are usually reimbursed.
Correct.
Um, so it's really.
Yeah, I mean, the courses are free, it's FEMA courses, FEMA runs the facility, but it's, uh, it's courses themselves are free, but it's the travel expenses that's involved, you know?
But you just have to prove those in advance just so that he's not doing those on his own, it's with board approval.
Exactly.
And one of the things we talked about chairman with the strategic plan is you're in your final note of your current bond. With an annual bond expenditure roughly hundred and five thousand for the initial half a million dollars. So we had talked about exploring with several banks before you go to the bond commission as to if we kept the same note, what kind of capital outlay could we require for a five, ten, fifteen, or possibly twenty year note? So will you put your strengths together, what your expenditures may be? We may have an overlay of what capital can be acquired based on kind of the dynamics. I heard something today that the home mortgage rate at a, uh, five percent, which was a, uh, significant low.
Yes, but that would work for stations, but it wouldn't work for apparatus.
If it had a fifteen year or less shelf life.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, typically they wanted to have a working life now, if you bought something based on your current call volume and runs. You could always have a board resolution that a frontline unit may be a twenty year unit versus a fifteen year loan to carry that shelf life. You can't go by, uh, paper and pencil, she have to have something that lasts, hopefully the length of the bond payment.
Yeah.
But the benefit to you and your constituents is they approve that combined millage with a extended sunset. So you now have those options available to you that you did not have before.
Right now, it's twenty years.
At the balance of what you have plus twenty.
Yeah.
Well, actually it's brand new, twenty, because you, you combined them, that's correct.
So, uh, it falls back to, you know. Trying to get us a. A, a pretty good idea of what we're looking at as far as dollars. And once we start, that thing starts to, to gel, then we could really start looking at. Do you go out to a, a mortgage institution or loaning institution versus a bond? And, and, you know, what are the, the discounts and loans gonna give, what? So there's a lot of things to think about, but when you get them, we'll, we'll, we'll move on.
Yeah, we're, um, we know rescue thirty-three is forty-two, forty-three years old. We're hopeful we can just completely, uh, get rid of that unit and P I L gave us some, some insight a few weeks ago in November. And we're hopeful that we can just completely get rid of that truck. And so that's a factor that we're waiting, um, get some clarification on. But nonetheless, I think we're looking at at least two trucks and we'll see how that works, um, you know, as far as acting mine with, with, with stations, you know? Um, back to the national fire academy, I'm all for it, I went there, um. Ten years ago, really years ago and spent, spent a week up there, so, um, I'm all for it.
I mean, I would, you know, I'd like to see some of the rank and files, um, uh, get the opportunity to go on, yeah, because it's, it's a, it's an experience. You know, um, our national fire memorial is that, you know, every firefighter that's ever lost their life in the line of duty is, is, uh, recognized up there. Uh, you know, there's, there's flags that, that, you know, every time, uh, there's a firefighter death, the flag fly at half mass. And almost, there's almost no time during the year where those flags aren't flying at half mass. Cause we lose eighty to a hundred firefighters every year, you know, and that's why it exists. The training.
So we avoid that.
So you guys get together and we'll come up with a plan and what we have to do is supportive, we'll do it.
Yeah, one, makes me very happy.
All right, folks, uh, anything else concerning strategic plan discussion? Nope. Okay. So under old business item five is a request, request for debt forgiveness. And, and we had a case last month. Uh, it was referred to as case number two, and again, we do this so that we don't disclose the people's personal information. So case number two. It evolved, um. I've got the information here, you could pass it around.
Yeah, we've been looking to get some more information.
Yeah, the, the question was, uh. Do we own the account? That was the question that we was, was brought up.
If it was already forgiven from. Not forgiven, but written off.
No, we know, well, we know where it's at, it was never forgiven, it was sitting at retail merchants. It's a company that had C four former chief, um, entered into an agreement for our collection.
Right, right.
Okay, so we were discussing it and one discuss, I think, Mr. Uh, Jack brought up is that do we actually own it to forgive? And, and so, uh, contacted retail merchants and the answer is yes, it's ours. It's ours, along with seventy-four others. That's living there. So, so.
So it's gonna be the stacks with the other seventy-four, we're gonna have to.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna be addressing that kind of later under new business. Uh, so we do own it, we can forgive it if we want to, it's ours. The only thing that I have about this one particular case. Is that the request, the form. That has to be filled out, right? They fill in the numbers, they write these notes, but down here it's very volatile, it says note. The source of your income listed and attached income documentation, and it lists all kinds of examples like pay stubs, uh, tax returns. We don't have any of it. And so for this particular individual, um, I just, I don't see, uh, I don't see enough evidence for me to be able to do it in that way. And what else might be?
Obviously, you have an incomplete application.
That's what I say, you have an incomplete application. That's what I say, you have an incomplete application. But it's the uh. It's the pleasure of the board, so so we do have case number two. Oh. Just looking at some of my my notes here, uh so we need, let's do this, let's have a motion to approve debt forgiveness for case number two. Gonna have a motion for that.
Okay, I have a motion to.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we got a motion, we got a second, and again, I'll just simply say that that don't feel like we got enough information to do this. Uh nothing to back up the information that's on the application, no tax returns and uh. This particular individual had a debt that was that went back. Several years here.
Twenty one.
Hmm twenty one. And so, you know, I get I always have that ask the question, why not? I so so.
Let me say this, I may be able to gain some more information about the title of this individual right here.
The this guy?
No, this person, and I think I was asked about this, I just now find it out about it.
This guy asked you?
Yeah. Uh through another person, but anyway, but um I think this gentleman. That it was a debt was an employee at some point of that person. And I may be able to get some more of this information for about this individual from him.
Yeah, yeah, so if if that's something that you wanna do, that's.
Yeah.
I I I just don't personally have enough information to.
I agree.
To approve this. Any other discussion on?
Oh. Um.
I'm not sure we ought to be trying to find out for somebody. Yeah, surely their obligation is.
Yeah, talk with that individual, have them at least come fill out the the form.
That's what you're doing, you know.
Yeah, to get a lot of. Get the to get the individual to come fill out the form and to go through the process.
That's.
So that we can come to an evaluation and vote on it.
Sure, I'll go and chase, you know.
But I believe you would be setting a unintentional standard of the board would have to take the action to seek that information versus then I'll see providing it, so I think it must be. Must be forthcoming from the individual, not the board trying to collect it.
If you wanna tell them, you need to pay for what to fill out, and that's.
Yeah. Which if you do that for one, then you have to do it for the other seventy four cases, and I think that puts you in a.
Well, you're a lawyer. But you don't worry.
I think you have a problem with some of that, but it sounds to me like the although the words were I could find more information. It sounds to me like the intention was to say, hey, look, assuming the board votes no tonight. The 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 it would be able to go back to this individual and say, hey, they voted no, not because of the merits of the case, it's because they couldn't decide the merits of the case. If you gave more information, you might be able to make a vote, sounds like you would be doing.
That's what I'm.
Rather than going to say, okay, I need this piece of paper and I need this piece of paper, right, you're just going to say, hey, we didn't tell you no because.
Yeah. Forever, we just contacted department, you didn't tell us why.
Good advice.
Pretty concerned it was about us in some cases, yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor, we have do have a second, we had some discussion, are we ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
All in favor of uh of proving the debt forgiveness, say aye.
All right, number two.
Number two. Uh any opposed? Me, I'll say no.
Thanks.
No. So we have one, four, and one, two.
Three.
Same, three.
No, no.
That's all right, so we got four, one. Got it. And so it does not carry, the motion does not carry.
Okay.
And then. We do have another case, Ms. Teresa brought to my attention, I guess you were just going through some of the records and 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 found it. Let's see, this goes back, this was tabled in June of twenty twenty five. Um for the same thing, that we didn't have enough information. And I have that report here that can focus for me to get.
Only six years.
So this is new then?
Yeah, well, it was tabled in June.
Yeah.
Of last year.
Yeah, last.
Okay, I I recall.
You remember.
Yeah. Okay. So this is more information we've gained since June, or is it?
No, I don't, I don't, I think this was our original application and we were gonna find out something else and it just died on the line.
Nothing to see there.
Okay. All right, so um let's have a motion to approve the debt, we'll call this one case three. Can I have a motion to approve the debt?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and uh to be fair, we have this individual, he does not have uh supporting documentation. He does have a form, uh but uh none of the required supporting documentation, so. Uh for the same reasons that we have for this case number two, uh I feel I'll have a difficult time. But we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some discussion, any more discussion on it? Now, let's vote all in favor of forgiving the debt of case three, say aye. Any opposed? One, two, unanimous opposed, okay, so the motion does not carry and for the same reason. And if we still have the information to send back to Ms. Teresa, we'll just have to tell them that uh.
It looks like you're.
Incomplete.
Yeah, you're denying those, all record keep those as oh six and oh seven, three one eight twenty six.
Perfect.
May I ask a question about this problems? Um. Could we set a standard to which we have to go through the motion of approving or disapproving? For example, we won't even talk about one uh applications that are incomplete without supporting documentation.
Sure. Yeah, I think.
I would prefer to do it that way, it would save some time and and and.
Yeah, only bring it to the board if they have the supporting criteria, right, all documentation, so.
So you may see something moving forward, uh.
If they have an extension that may. Then, you know, we'll consider it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the reason why I'm not considering, because we got no proof there there.
Well, I was making certain that it has to be completed in full, so you're not dealing with it every month with new bit of information this month and a new bit that month.
Well, as as things move tonight, you there may be a move on. Anything else on debt forgiveness? All right, we'll move on to the next topic and uh ambulance performance. Uh so I uh committed to tracking the ambulance through the year and report back to the board how we're doing with ambulances. What are we making money, we losing money, where are we at? And so tonight I'll give you the twenty twenty five, I got it listed on the agenda as a twenty twenty six performance, which is the actual performance of twenty twenty five. And so, real quick. We spent fifty nine thousand. On ambulance repair and maintenance, about six thousand on training. About thirty five thousand on equipment, about twenty six thousand on supplies. About twenty one thousand on fuel. Uh roughly sixty thousand dollars for billing service and a bond payment of eighty one thousand, eighty two thousand dollars. And the salaries to operate the ambulance came to four hundred and forty four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Yet it was a total expense for the year of twenty twenty five. Of seven hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. That's what it costs to run that ambulance. Repeat that for me. This the total expense, you want all the items or just total expense?
Total.
Total expense was seven hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Our gross revenue on the ambulance was seven hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty seven dollars. For a total profit of a negative twenty six thousand, five hundred and one dollars. So we're plus twenty six five, and I say the word of loss. In that twenty six thousand, we picked up a reserve unit. And we spent about twenty thousand memory, is right, getting that reserve ambulance prepared to hit the road. In my book. It's zero.
Close.
So we provided service to this community, a stellar service to this community. For a um essentially of no cost. The worthy like the use is revenue neutral. We maintain revenue neutrality, right? And and so that's where you wanna be, right, we're a public entity, we're not for profit. And if you could run a public business and you balanced the book essentially at zero, you did you did exactly what you were supposed to do.
You get a gold star.
Yeah, and so this department gets a gold star.
So Mike, any any thoughts on on maybe how to improve that, the expenses?
I mean, and see how they're doing with their services.
I'll be aware.
I know we've got some uh uh comparisons taking place or project.
We have, yes, uh we have a firefighter and one of the one of the chiefs heading up a comparison. Yeah, it's it would be locally, regionally, state, then nationally, to see uh for a good, better and best practice.
It's a question, Mike, uh Mike, uh. Any idea how we compare to any of the other five districts in Saint Tammy that provide ALS?
Not as far as profitability. I I have no, I don't have any answer, I know. We do have, we were just speaking of that, that there is some committee members that are working on that specific data. I also do know that um. Yeah, thank you. Uh. Lost my brain, so they're working on that as far as trying to compare us to some of the other departments, I I don't have any answer.
Uh I'm just I'm just curious, I mean, I just. So I think that's.
So we can, there is, I can show you the next discussion, very next topic. Where we take the beating at.
Okay.
And so if there's if there's anything else other than how to to save the revenue, we can address that now.
Yeah, I would say there's any kind of way we can streamline it to make it a little bit profitable, you know.
Well, we we did one step in that is we we approved the final bond payment. So not this year, but next year, your profit margins are gonna increase because you didn't have to outlay the bond payment.
Okay, well, yeah.
And maintenance, I think we took it over the chin a couple of times on generator repairs.
Put it, put it brand new.
Yeah, it was very pricey, so now we got a third ambulance that. We could manage these costs a little bit better, we can schedule removing ambulance from service and do some preventative maintenance.
Mm hmm.
Before, it was really hard to do preventative maintenance because we depended upon it to be on the road.
Uh so my thoughts are, you know, uh if. The ALS, the ambulance service is able to profit year to year. Um where it could sustain itself, uh it even, you know. Provide money towards when we need new apparatus to have that in reserve, you know, for the equipment, the things that we're gonna need. To make to make that portion of our service, you know, self sufficient, so to speak, you know. Uh that would be an an awesome goal, in my opinion, that we.
Welcome on all these.
You know, yeah, I know, I just look at it, I think in the last year we've come a long way.
Yeah.
A long way, because in years past, we had no idea.
No.
Of profitability of, you know, anything at least.
Well, keep in mind with that, part of this money that we took on to new people, right?
Mm hmm.
So we, the board said we wanted to make sure those animals were staffed, we'll be there, we say we want a pair of that, we want a person to drive it. So we brought on four hundred and forty four thousand dollars worth of, not counting, uh benefit burden.
Yeah.
That that has to be paid out.
Think, you know, this department is providing elite service to its to its uh constituents, you know, not not every, you know, different than Saint Tammy has that.
Correct.
They can say that, and I think y'all.
Okay, I I agree.
Yeah.
So going to item seven, it may help explain things a little bit better, so item seven is the medical billing performance. And so I'll start off by saying that Corona's, all the data that I have that I've looked at. Um throughout last year, Corona's clears most invoices that we have within ninety days of billing. After this ninety days, there are very few things, so if you look at Corona's and you wanna talk about their performance, I I'm. I'm personally very satisfied with the form, the books are cleaned out really good, now, where are we taking a hit? Now, go back. If you go back and you look at, you say. The cost of that ambulance, ambulance total cost, total expenses, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. So we provided back to this community. Two billion, seven hundred and sixty three thousand, three hundred and seventy nine dollars and seventy eight cents worth of medical. Run, they're informed, right?
Yes.
They're informed, so that's the total for all the calls, we they had uh one thousand, sixty two billable calls last year. Which came out with that number, now here's where we get beat up. If you take back, you gotta have the adjustments, right, so everything is not recoverable. You got Medicare, you got Medicaid, you got negotiated with uh uh hospitals, insurance companies, there's a lot of negotiation there, so there's adjustments. So we took in two point seven six three, our total adjustments was one million, seven hundred and ninety six thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars, ninety eight cents. Right, so that's dollars that we could not repel, that's Medicare, that's Medicaid. What drives that is demographics. If this was a very young community of forties, those types, those are insurance people, men, right? So they got private insurance, they got company insurance, they got those things, we got a retired community. And so we got a high population Medicare, Medicaid, which will limit the amount of money that you can pull. So there are some subtle switches that we could throw to help approve that. And we we really wanna look at, cause every switch you throw, you you save thousand, two thousand dollars, it's, yeah, it's good. So the total dollars brought in was, uh again, I reported out early, it's seven hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty seven, eighty six cents, so. It's a little off of our projection, I think we it was seven point five, uh seven hundred and fifty thousand was our our original projection, so we fell by fifty. Can't do anything about it, it's call volumes.
Mm hmm.
It's call volume.
Actually, your seven twenty was your total.
Seven twenty?
Yeah, you collected just right under seven seventeen.
Yeah, so.
You're almost at a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's close, yeah.
Okay, so that's the report on the ambulance, that was a report on the billing, are there any questions on the debt? Okay, I'll continue, is there anything that you want me to look at? Want to look and at the ambulance as a bill?
His his, I'm I'm just thinking up, I mean, what we charge for uh. An ambulance ride, uh is it in line with local?
Yeah, so.
I mean.
Yeah, so around this, there are, there are. So, yeah, so Corona's, there are, there are federal statutes, correct, council? Federal statutes that dictate what can be charged.
Got it.
There's some of that that's out there. And then what they do is they take a look at uh, an average of the ambulance providers in the state, and there's a, you know, uh, what's reasonable and customary in the charge. I think we're right there. Last time we looked, uh, we're at twenty-three hundred dollars.
Your, your piece of medical fees are very, very close.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Now, there'll be some adjustments this year, every year, there's a few adjustments.
Yeah, annual jumps in place and you can fill a thing, you know, costs.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so if we don't have anything else, if you, nothing else that you guys want me to focus on, on the cost of the ambulance, then our medical billing performance, I'll move to new business. Okay. First is, uh, first order of business is, uh, Board of Regulation, uh, Resolution twenty-two-six-zero-zero-one. And it's for professional services vote of confidence. I, I've always said, I always was confused about the, the vote of confidence. I, I think when we first started this, we even did a vote of confidence for the chiefs.
Well, actually, this follows the accreditation process that both district, one district for due. So it's just an annual validation of the services that you receive on a professional level.
And so they do it because of, it's a
Accreditation.
For accreditation.
So we're doing almost best of breed practices in that accreditation mode, even though you may never wish to spend the time and effort to become accredited. Following those practices is just good business.
Okay. So we'll open it up with a motion to approve the resolution twenty-two-six-zero-one.
I'll give that motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussions on the resolution?
Yeah, I just got some, I'm just curious. Um, just understand, it's a good faith question, I, that. What is the metric to which one would compare professional services from, uh, PMI as opposed to not?
Well, great question. First of all, there's really no entity statewide, regionally, that provides the combined package that we do.
Okay.
Um, as a professional service, you're not falling or subject to the traditional bid laws. So you're not required to go get three separate bids if you were to buy an engine or things of that nature. And really, it is the pleasure of the board to determine, one, are we technically classified as professional service answers? Yes, just like Chad would be is legal. And two, if you're satisfied with the deliverable of those services, you're just ratifying that satisfaction.
So it's, it's, it's an affirmation of a satisfaction for a professional service.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, is it binding in any way, like, is there any?
So it doesn't modify our long-term agreement with the department. It's just an affirmation that we believe we've produced a professional service, and you write about that, we've produced a professional service back to the department.
And the chairman and I have talked about this, I guess, at least one year, but maybe even go on two years now. It's really the nomenclature, I think, that, that sticks in the chairman's craw, uh, what is this vote of confidence? But really, what it is, is it's an annual review of the professional services that the, the board essentially, you know, uh, hires. And so it's, we put it on the calendar to say, okay, I want you to look at this at least once a year to say, are you doing a good job or are you not? And if you, if we're going to continue, I want you to do these things better, or, um, we're happy or whatever. So it, it says vote of confidence because it's really a vote of to continue the relationship. Mine is a little more defined because I do a one-year contract, so I need you to review mine. But, um, the PMI contract's an ongoing contract that you can terminate with, I believe, thirty days.
It's an evergreen.
Yeah, I know, so you can terminate it anytime you want.
So it doesn't modify the agreements, it's just is, for some reason, the accreditation process has used our vote of confidence as a ratification of the deliverable services.
But is the professional service itemized or is it just general?
Well, for us, it would include the accounting, it would include RISL, which is our insurance agency, it would include the HR practices that we do through PMI, it would include the payroll services. It's likely would also include your medical director and your legislative officer, Arizona report. So it's just a global, hopefully, overview and validation that the board is comfortable for the services that were delivered in twenty-twenty-five and a move forward for those continued services in twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, I'm curious, um, I don't even know if this is possible, right? But it, it would be difficult for me to, to, um, determine if, if you're providing a professional service when I don't understand what a professional service in that respect would look like. I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, you, well, actually, um, from a standpoint of, uh, like payroll, having provided the payroll service, having done everything in compliance with all statutory law. That's a perfect example, I'm doing a white paper tomorrow on the, at the fire chiefs association to help assist in the no tax on qualified overtime wages and no tax on cash tips. Because the seven K rules fall outside of traditional pay for anybody that's in a twelve or eight hour, you know, standard schedule with the twenty-four schedule. From an HR standpoint, you know, you had no management liability exposure, you had none of those other exposures. And we are recognized as the HR service provider for BFIS for the entire state through that, your property category insurance carrier. So you also have some outside about verification that they are endorsing us from that standpoint as we go forward.
Okay.
So, and you look at the insurance side, we've been very cost competitive, we've taken it to market. Unfortunately, as we've discussed numerous times, there's a limited space for fire insurance in any state, regardless of just Louisiana. But then again, we have Austin front of the civil service board.
Right.
So if you look at the things that we've done from a discipline, a lot of that is a duality with Chad Danenhour and his law firm. But the department, I think, has excelled with the board guidance and with the new chief beyond anything that was ever imagined twelve months ago.
No, you've just described several bullet points that, that proved to me, obviously, that, that it's, it's a very professional job well done. Thank you, I'm very much appreciative of that, so thank you for explaining.
Hello, we welcome our questions because an unanswered question, uh, just is a, something that should never be left on the table.
Sure.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So this is just a, this is a validation of twenty-twenty-five deliverables and a move forward for twenty-twenty-six.
No, I ain't gonna say that.
And, and you know, vote of confidence, you know, good job.
Yeah, I mean, again, you could say approval of a, I don't know, you kind of thing.
And I'll say it this way, from a standpoint, uh, I, I, I a perfect example is the handbook policy that we're working on is backbone through the accredited policies we did at one and four. You may never use an accredited policy, but why would I not take an approved accredited policy modified for District Three? Even though you may never go through that hundred thousand dollar expense to become accredited.
Yeah, so I appreciate what you're saying. Um, I'd like to be made aware of the things that you're doing, that would be fantastic. I don't know how that, like, I wasn't aware about the handbook that you were working on or.
But we presented it, I think Michael's been working on it in some form and fashion, we have, but little things like all the board resolutions we prepare, things of that nature, those are just standard items that we do to make sure we're complying with the law.
Very well, sounds good.
I mean, from a preparation standpoint, every time he attends these meetings, man, he, he's well-prepared beforehand. You know, I mean, there's no ambiguity in where he's coming from and what he's prepared to present to us. Yeah. You make our job very easy.
Well, and that's my goal, to be honest with you, that's my.
I appreciate that, yeah.
And I would say that some of the obstacles that this board has challenged and succeeded on, obviously, the biggest one would be a new fire chief. But, you know, some of the potential exposures that were mitigated because of the combination of our services with Chad Danenhour, I think, uh, removed any prechance of a headline and, uh, pushed the department in absolutely the correct, in right direction.
Very well, thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
I'd be happy to.
I just wanted to know if I get a vote. Yeah. Speaking of votes, we got a motion, we got a second, that just, we, along with our discussion, all in favor of, uh, adopting resolution twenty-two-six-zero-one, professional services vote of confidence, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, so the resolution carries. Okay, uh, twenty-two-six-zero-two, professional service vote of confidence, legal.
This probably has a lot more discussion than mine.
Before we get into that, we'll need a motion to, uh, to approve the resolution.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Do we have a motion to, uh, to approve the resolution twenty-two-six-zero-zero-two? Professional for legal fee?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussions that we would like to have with Chad?
Chad? I'd, I'd like to have it. Chad doesn't do this, but I think this curtails some of how we have worked our business together for the benefit of the industry to work at, is if you look at number three, the legal billable hour for his year's experience is three fifty, you're at a hundred and twenty-five hour below that. So we believe the combination of our deliverables helps provide that service. I, I hate to use the word at a discount rate, but I think at a value-based rate, at the point of what we offer together.
The only thing I've always said, I, I don't think you turn any of our bills.
Well, I was done, I mean, if you look at your budget, I'm at fifty percent of what your budget did for me. I, 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 well, I mean, it's sort of a part of that is, um, just my personal philosophy on how I run an office. Uh, I would much rather you call me with a question and, um, maybe it would give you a quick either response. If I have to do real work on it, then I typically do bill you. Uh, there may be occasions where I'm in the car and I forget that I talked to you for thirty minutes while I was commuting or something along those lines, and you don't get billed for that. But, uh, a, what I don't want is for my clients to be concerned that they're going to get nickled and dimes. And so they don't call me until there's a real problem. And now what was a thirty-dollar problem is now a four-hundred-dollar problem. So there's a lot of times where I do not bill just because it's, it would cost me more to bill you than it would for me to recover.
I just.
And I'm like, I appreciate that. But what I, the value I do get from that is you actually stating it. So I appreciate that you do state it, and then to the extent, if anybody ever calls you for referrals, remember that. Because, uh, that is one of the values that I try to.
With Chad and us combined experience, you're dealing with over fifty years of subject matter expert. So, you know, from a standpoint of compliance with civil service laws and things of that nature, we should know it like the back of our hand and not have to do a lot of research because of that fifty-plus years of providing experience.
I have a little more than fifty than he does, but.
Okay, so we've got a, uh, motion on the floor, we do have a second, is there any further discussion on Resolution twenty-two-six-zero-two? I don't hear any, so all in favor of, uh, passing resolution, or approving resolution twenty-two-six-zero-zero-two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion carries. Okay, now. Guys, you're gonna have to bear with me because this next little bit is going to take a minute.
Well, actually, you had the resolution just on the bond, which is a housekeeping measure.
Uh, yeah, that's true, that's true. So, um, is it twenty-two-six-zero-three, approve the twenty-two-six funding, which is the bond payment? And I'll just say it as simple as it can, do we want to pay the bill? We need a motion to approve paying the bill.
Resolution twenty-two-six-zero-two.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on paying the bill? This will be the last one.
Well, and actually, there's some benefit to you. We had to do this five years ago because there was some ambiguity between your two mills, your twenty-five and your ten. And we could not use the twenty-five to pay the obligation for EMS. So we had to do a formal resolution to validate to the state bond commission that we were pulling those monies, even though they're not segregated when you receive it, that the ten mil, the nine-nine-four was sufficient to pay the obligation. So this type of record keeping will disappear with the combined millage going forward.
All right, so we got a motion, we have a second, any discussion on it?
Okay.
I hear none, all in favor of, um, approving twenty-two-six-zero-three, paying the bill? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, and those carrots. All right, so now, this is the one that's going to take me a little bit. So, uh, Mike, I don't think you was on the board at the time, and Adam, I'm pretty sure you wasn't on the board, so um, the rest of you may recall, but I'm going to build a story for Mike and Adam. So they were, what we found through the tran, transitioning from chiefs uh, and looking at our former billing company, we had a practice of allowing the billing company to forgive debt representing us. So they were doing it willy-nilly, we had no clue as a board that it was a term, come to our attention. We engaged the state legal of the, um,
Office of Debt Recovery.
I know, I did, it was through the LLA. I went through the LLA with their legal, and we got some guidance from the LLA, the state's lawyer, and we pulled some records from inside billing, which was a billing company at the time. And they had a little north of four million dollars that was just kind of like there. Uh, we really didn't know if it was Medicare, Medicaid, we, you know, we kind of poked around at it. Some of this stuff was really old.
That it was contractually written down?
Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, it was so, from the four million, I think at the end of the day, we thought there was probably a, maybe about a million that was still on the table somehow, some way. The advice from the state attorney was to say, go back, what was it, three years to COVID, declare it as uncollectible debt and move about your life. Uh, we did, that's what we did, because we know on it. Uh, and we moved on with our life. Well, since then, uh, we've learned that there are other resources that are available to, which I'll discuss in the next item. And, oh, they're also, we're bound by, uh, the Louisiana Constitution, being one, we'll talk about that a little bit. Louisiana Constitution about giving away money. Uh, we're not allowed to give away the public's money. Then there is a revised statute, a state statute, that declares, uh, the Office of Debt Recovery, which is a division of the treasurer.
Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue. That will, uh, we're supposed to, by law, utilize that organization to recover debt. And so what I'm ask, going to ask tonight for the board to consider is to rescind, uh, the resolution that we passed in twenty-twenty-four. Um, that would be, I think, actually, it was, it was done in twenty-five. Uh, it was Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-zero-thirty-eight is the resolution that we did to deem that money as uncollectible debt.
And to actually engage Corona's as your collection agency, so you're.
It was like the same, it was the same resolution.
So, yeah, so this would rescind Corona's as the collection agency.
Not the billing company.
Correct, as a collection agency.
Yeah, as a collection. But we also have this other collection agency, goes around after retail merchants. Okay, so we'll talk about them too. So what I'm asking you guys tonight to do is consider re, rescinding the resolution where we deem that money is uncollectible.
Well, actually, the resolution said it was collectible, but you were going to hire an agency to do it. So you're removing Corona's as that collection agency, and if you prove a following resolution, it would transfer it back to the Office of Debt Recovery.
Okay, well, yeah, okay. So that's where we are with this particular resolution. And so I'd like to get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-six-zero-four, rescinding Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-three-eight. We have a motion.
Well, wait, okay, we have a motion, but I'll, I'll move.
Okay, yeah.
So we are removing Cronus as their debt collector and giving it back to the state revenue.
They never had it.
They never had.
They never had. Okay, but it was designated in this resolution.
We had a discussion of at approximately six months. If it was uncollected by Cronus Active Medical Billing Services, it would move to the Cronus Collection Agency Services. We are rescinding the part of moving it to the Collection Agency Services. And the follow up resolution will be moving it to the legal state agency of the Office of Debt Recovery as cited. So we're basically, we're not changing anything medically with Cronus, other than removing them as the collection agency for outstanding medical ability. The second resolution will move it to the state agency, which is the appropriate place for it to be.
Okay, different. You, you, we've, we've discussed this, you know, uh.
The one with the state?
But we're going to the state.
If you wanna discuss the one with the state, we've got the next resolution coming up. So that may be a more appropriate.
Okay, maybe so then. Okay, I'll, I'll reserve my questions. And I'd like to remind everybody, uh, to people that are here, um, Cronus really doesn't, there's no real distinction inside Cronus from their active collections and their debt, uh, collection services. It really, they don't even really change entities for the most part. It's really just a, a status of how long it's aged inside.
Because we officially engaged them, I think it's appropriate for the formal record to rescind it. And it's really a aging tracking from Cronus that you're dealing with that moves it from active to collection. That same tracking would move it from active Cronus to active with O D R.
Quite interesting is that we never established a time, we never established a time to tell Cronus to move it from collections, uh, from billing to. So everything that's there at Cronus technically is still in billing. There is nothing in Cronus.
My next question was, was, was there any charters incurred?
No, with the bill collect, with the collections. No, their standard fee.
Only, only if they actually collect. Oh, yeah, so it's their standard fee. And then, as the chairman said, and since nothing was ever put over to debt collection, there was no change in the fee.
But the, the physical reach that Cronus has to collect is not as substantive as the reach from the Office of Debt Recovery.
We'll move on to that.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. We've had some discussion. Yeah, you have? No, no. So all in favor of, uh, adopting resolution twenty twenty six zero zero four, which would rescind twenty twenty five thirty eight, say aye? Any opposed? I hear none. So the motion carries. All right, so now I've got another motion up. Uh, and it is going to be resolution twenty twenty six zero zero five. And what this resolution will do will allow us to enter into an agreement with the Louisiana Office of Debt Recovery. Now, you know, give some information out that allows that conversation here and there. So up to this point tonight, we talked about several times about doing that, uh, uh, relief, right? We was gonna do some forgiveness. Um, we talked about in old business item number five, that there's a hundred and seventy four cases that are in a collection agency referred to as Retail Merchants Association. It's a company that we entered into a contract. I say we. I wasn't here. I don't think many people were here, but we entered into that contract on November second, twenty eighteen. And, uh, it was entered to an agreement by the chief at the time. It was Pat C. Corr. Uh, I've taken, uh, talking to our legal counsel in the past. We had no idea that this contract even existed out there. So it was never really reviewed by our legal. Uh, but anyway, it's, it's still a binding contract. It was gone by an official department. This contract, uh, and I'm gonna hand it to the lawyer to make sure that we're good with things. The contract will be, uh, in place for five years. And so that means that uh, in twenty twenty three, we, we lived up our obligation to be in a contract. Uh, and if we wanna sever our contract with them, uh, we can do it for no cause. All we have to do is give them ninety days for it. So I'm gonna come over to you and see if it was, at your leisure, look at it and see if we're missing anything. Okay, so on the books, uh, at Retail Merchants Association, they have a total balance of seventy eight thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars as well as thirty four thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Uh, that was counse- canceled. I don't know why they canceled it, uh, but they did. They canceled the debt. Uh, that equates to a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty nine dollars that is sitting at Retail Merchants. Then I looked at Insight. All right, so Insight, as we discussed earlier, there was this number of about four million dollars that was laid out there. But I'm not gonna talk about that at this point. I'm just gonna tell you what was in the readers at Insight Billing for twenty twenty four. All right, so we transitioned from Insight to Cronus. Well, Cronus for the first half of the year had billed, but they didn't move them. Okay? And so that number, uh, comes to two hundred ninety three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, now some of that could be Medicare, Medicaid. I don't, we'll have to, we'd have to drill into these things. At Cronus, we have that's over a hundred and eighty days old. We have eighty six thousand four hundred and ninety eight dollars. Now, I've spoken with, um, the Retail Merchants people. They had absolutely no faith of collecting. They're very limited. They can only deal with, uh, certain states that license collecting. Cronus, I spoke to Susan there. Susan said anything over a hundred and eighty days, likelihood of getting anything is not there. So, so keep those in mind. Okay, now the Cronus money, the Cronus money, that eighty six thousand four hundred and ninety eight dollars, that's, uh, that's hold it all. That's, that's over a hundred and eighty days old. So all the discounts have been moved off of already.
That should be a net number to the.
That's right. That's right. Okay, so add it all up. Retail Merchants, hundred thirteen two thirty nine. Insight Billing, two hundred ninety three two fifty. Cronus, eighty six thousand four ninety eight gives us a total of four hundred ninety two thousand nine hundred and eighty seven dollars. And that does not include anything that was rescinded uh, uh, in the resolution. Right? So there's a number. The realistic number there is probably closer to a million. I would probably say a little south of a million. Not gonna be four million if not. But there's money that's there. Uh, that should be explored for recovery. Do, uh, the challenge really is how do you collect the debt, right? So we got this number that's being hanging out there and, uh, so we know under Louisiana Constitution that we can't give away the company's money. I'm, I'm, I'm just stealing it now. It's kinda wordy, but that's it. You can't give it away.
It's tax bear dollars.
That's the tax bear dollars. And it really prohibits the state or its political subdivisions of loaning, pledging, donating, credit, property, things of any value to any private entity. Now, I want us to think about that when we reflect back on these cases. And we're gonna go this and we're gonna collect the debt. The state says we can't do it. Now, we can. We can. But the state says we should, or you can't, right? So when we're thinking about changing the forms and stuff, maybe a moot point. Okay, so now there is a revised statute of the state that says it shall be the public policy of this state to aggressively pursue the collection of the money that's owed. Okay, so we got two bits of guidance from the law. And so now what do you do about this uncollectible debt? And so I was able to get in touch with the Department of Re- uh, Revenue, Office of Debt Recovery, which in itself was a little bit of a feat to get to them because they, uh, they're not in secret, but they don't wanna publicize their information. And the reason they don't wanna publicize their information is because of what they do, right? And you'll see in a minute, so a very short presentation of what they are capable of doing. And their capability has the high opportunity, I'll put it up, of irritating people. They're very highly irritated individuals. So they don't want everybody willy nilly following this guy. So I ended up getting in touch with him. And we had a lot of discussions. I had some discussions with him on the phone. Uh, we've had email exchanges. Mark, I think, uh, you've had email exchanges with him. I've gotten a copy of the agreement, which I have given to legal. Legal's went through it. I think your words was, there's not anything in there we can't live with. Okay, so I'm gonna go through this quick presentation. All right, so this was not anything that I produced. This is from the Office of Debt Recovery. I think I'm, uh, versed in it well enough to ask you, answer any questions. I've taken out a lot of the slides because it was procedural slides. You have to utilize. He did talk about a lot of stuff that really wasn't for the board to, to work out. Okay. So what if the Office of Debt Recovery is a division of the Department of Revenue? It's there to collect out the debt owed to Louisiana, the government, and any subdivisions of the government. It is, uh, that is in law, uh, twenty thirteen, and it give the office, uh, authorization to pursue the money. All right? And August twenty nineteen, John Bell signed into law and clarifies and confirms that municipality, cities, and other government entities can participate. So that was the main thing that I wanted to make sure, that can we participate? And after a discussion with the gentleman that's the, that runs it, yes, we met very clearly the definition of it. Where the state is mandated to work for these people, we, uh, we can participate. So when I use the word that we were mandated to, to utilize them, the state is, we're not. We can elect to participate.
Which are recognized as a political subdivision of the state, so that'll get you that.
Yeah, so that is fair. Now, uh, and what it really boils down to is they look at this debt like it was a tax debt. And so they can use all means that's available to them to collect this tax debt. The other thing that he referred to it as child support. He said, uh, they view it very similar to child support. So all the things that they can do. So how do they collect it? Uh, the word, word there is all set to state tax refund. So if a individual has a tax refund due them and they owe fire district three ten dollars, we give them ten dollars before they get theirs. Uh, they can intercept federal and state vendor payments. So if they in company or individual, uh, has been doing business with the state and he expects to get a paycheck from the state and they owe us ten dollars, we get our ten. Uh, outside the, they can go, uh, get outside collection agencies if that's where they wanna go. They could target bank lobbies. They could be wage garnishments, uh. They can suspend your hunting, fishing, and driver's license. They can suspend your professional license. You go to the Gulf Coast and you win some money and you have to earn driver's licenses to get the money because it's tax bearing. And the individual owes us ten dollars. We get ten dollars before they get their money. That's why this is why it's God and not one of those numbers. Because they even every means ability to get. They can suspend an individual's ability to register for class at State University.
Elaborate record.
Yeah, that's the last, that's the key.
That's the doc right there.
What it amounts to is that if you take a look at what they're capable of doing and what the loan is capable of doing, there's no comparison to the, there's nothing to compare with. The most that a loaner could do is give them a very stern letter. That's what they can do.
That's right, is this solves any L L A requirements that you have not pursued collecting the debt, which is a requirement by the law.
Now, uh, let's see what else is on the next one.
Real quick, David. Not one of them are currently in use, it says.
Say it again.
Not all of those are currently in use?
No, no, the acrid is currently in use.
Yeah, so the, the hunting, fishing driver's license not in use?
Yeah, that's not there yet.
No, but it may not have any acrid, but that is the word of, uh, the fellow, he told me. Uh, they could pull your driver's license. They could pull your hunting license. So I, I, as I said, uh, you know, qualified going in, it's not my slide. Yeah, but I know what he told me. And, uh, I think he didn't even validate it in emails, right?
He did.
Yeah.
We, we did a basically email Q and A back and forth to try to get as much understanding as possible.
So there is a cost of participation. So.
Parish government's fixing to use it.
Yeah, I wonder how they found out. All right, cost of participation. So there is a cost associated with this fifteen percent of the debt, but we don't pay that. So once it gets handed over to the Office of Debt Recovery, and they owe a hundred dollars to us, with their bill down a hundred and fifteen dollars. We have to do a couple of things. Our entity will have to, uh, pay to send out two collection letters. And when it says pay, that means that we have to get that letter in an envelope into the post office, pay the postage, and off it goes. All right, so that's what that means. We have to do two of, there's a sixty day notification and a thirty day. Uh, you send out the first one. Uh, it's our initial demand letter. Uh, they give it to us. We don't have to generate it. Uh, before we send it, I'll certainly give it to the legal to take a good, a hard look at it.
Does Cronus already, you know, send letters out?
But see, so that was one of the questions. So it cannot be from Cronus. It has to be from us.
Has to be from the agency that owes the obligation.
And then we'll do a thirty day. And then on day sixty one, we can transfer or place our debt with the Office of Debt Recovery. Then the Office of Debt Recovery, if I remember right, within fifteen days, will then send out a letter to the debtor. Putting them on notes.
And the only thing that he recommended to me was maybe do those two letters by proof of mailing. Because USPS is. Not certified mail, but proof of mailing. You just have to prove that you put it into the.
Not that they receive it.
Correct. Because USPS is a recognized courier by the federal government. So you just have to prove you got it there.
How do we get our money? All payments received during the month are paid at the end of the following month. So if we submit some stuff to them today, by February, the end of February, we should be getting some money back. They, it's a paper check thing. You'll learn. It's all right. I get to the bank. Uh, we receive electronic file that matches the payment detailing the collective amount from each debtor. And how do we start? The first thing we have to do is enter into the agreement with the O D R, Office of Debt Recovery. We. We have to set up procedures and, and, uh, policies, alright? There is, we have some options to do here. One thing we could do is turn key this work. There is, there's more entity that they recommend that can take it and turnkey it, alright? We give them the information and they send out all the letters, they track it, they communicate it with the state. Uh, but we still have to go and pull it out. Alright, so we're gonna have to come up with a policy and a procedure. And Mark had brought up even some, uh, standard responses. Because when the guy gets his casino winnings chopped and they come on the phone screaming and hollering, uh, what do we say?
Well, that was one of the things that we spoke with him about and he said, you know, a, a simple Q and A for someone who calls up here and says, hey, you collected fifty dollars of my five hundred winnings. Well, we've delivered a service to you and you have an outstanding obligation that statutory law requires us to collect. Turn it from the district trying to collect the money to statutory law requires you to collect it.
That's one issue. Our answer will be contact the Office of Debt Recovery. Give them your case number and they will explain it to you.
Correct, so there was, there was a couple of avenues where you're not being blindsided with rogue calls. We've already got pretty, pretty much answers to anybody that might call up here. So everybody's on the same page. The other thing we discussed is you have the ability to set the timeline that you wish to have this process engaged. So if you want it to be at the ninety day window or the one hundred eighty day window of Corona's, that you would give Corona's sufficient time to do their work prior to you getting that clip and then you move it to the O D R.
So, you know, validated with this Corona's, Corona's is, uh, Susan's very supportive of the hundred eighty day. She, if you get over, if it's a hundred and eighty one days, she said, go do that.
Your resolution for you tonight is to engage them and authorize the participation agreement. We'd have to set a second resolution in future meetings as to the parameters that would require the engagement.
Well, um, um, we can, we can do a resolution in the future, but I'd rather take a discussion and vote on it. So we would have two things, we would have this resolution, but we need to move forward, right? And so.
Unless resolution engages them formally.
Yeah, but I, I want some latitude from the board to allow for the development of the internal process.
Correct.
That's what I, yeah, I don't want to discuss that. Take it down. You know, I would like to see us move it. We've got four hundred and, we got half a million dollars that's out there. That's the easy, that's the easy one that would go early.
That's verifiable.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ran a little discussion on this, so you can't.
Yeah, so, so I've just, I've, I've got it up to, to that point, we'll review the slides. Uh, before we get into the discussion, can we have a motion to approve, uh, the resolution twenty twenty six zero zero five? Uh, yeah, so let's do that. And then do we, can we bundle into it, uh, given the the administration latitude to, uh, build out the procedures and process? Do we have, yeah, so we'll just bundle it into this amendment.
This is engaging the agency itself.
Yep.
We would have to go back with the agency and say, this is our protocols for your engagement.
Okay, so it's gonna be bundled into one.
At the end of the day.
At the end, that's all I need.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve twenty twenty six zero five? Approve the agreement with Louisiana Office of Debt Recovery? And with that, uh, develop the procedures, processes and procedures.
Okay, I have the motion.
Do we have to set, now we're open for discussion.
Alright. Here's my thing, we've discussed this, you and I, and, you know, I've been sitting on this and I, I, and I'm being, being honest, I'm sitting on the fence with this because we saw it, people started getting their tax returns garnished and all that stuff. There's gonna be some negative publicity gonna come from this. Are we prepared for this? I mean, this is, you, you're going, this is some serious steps that, look, I, look, and I understand we have half a million dollars sitting out there that, you know, if we get half of that, you know, that's, that's pretty substantial. And, and, and believe me, as a board member, look, I know this, this department needs the, the revenue. But I, I can't help but think that this is, you know, you get, especially if we do, if we do a big bundle and all of a sudden, you know, a hundred and fifty residents of the home gets notices from the state that, you know, possibly gonna get their, their taxes garnished and this and that and so forth. It's gonna be a pretty big thing. People are gonna start, start talking.
Identified in this collection or just the state?
It's the state. It's the state. Uh, I mean, you know.
I don't know what the bill is for.
The resources.
The case that we're.
That they have to get, to get this money back, I mean, it's, 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 it's brutal. Okay, not, I don't bug y'all, but I mean, I have something, you know, I wouldn't be too happy about somebody taking my tax returns.
Now.
But, but there again, okay, but that said, you know, I think we need to really consider.
I'll counter that though. And think, I'll counter that. With every other person in this community who is utilized in what's been paid the bill, that they're paying their taxes, how would they feel about not getting the money that's owed? Now, so it's, I get, I'm, I'm.
Like I said, I'm really torn.
I've got two sides, I mean, so do we run the risk of irritating people who have paid the bill? Paid their fair share, they paid their taxes and they would say, well, why do they get it for free?
The story I had with the gentleman was in a standard community, about ninety percent recognizes and pays his obligation. And the ten percent that do not is the ten percent we're dealing with today, very broad numbers. So you have that in every organization that you go out there where ten percent says, I appreciate the service, but I'm not paying for it.
Yeah.
So the ones that you would proverbially agitate are those that have just quite frankly said, we're not paying.
Yeah.
But the other ninety percent in goodwill have said they would, so you, you, you get down to that ninety ten in almost every topic that you deal with.
I would suppose that it would take a lot of discussion amongst us board members to set the parameters. Do, do we, this is thought of, I mean, I, I look, I understand there's a lot of money on the table. And to, you know, that you would, we would be hitting a broad, uh, spectrum of, of former customers, you know, in, in one shot. Uh, do we wanna, I just thought that we want a grandfather, anybody in there, can we grandfather, you know?
If you look at the, when you get out of constitution, the answer to that is no.
No, I mean, yeah, by, by law, we're almost forced to do this.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think you, I think you're right. You are, and you have people that no longer live here, you have people that may be deceased where it's uncollectible because of that. So you're not guaranteed to get all that proverbial half a million dollars back for other factors.
I mean, I suppose I would have no issue with this, maybe if the state mandated that all, everybody, every state entity, you know, uh, become part of this, uh, Office of Debt Recovery, you know, uh, uh.
Well, first of all.
But it's violent territory.
As Chairman said, it's a very glum known secret.
Yeah.
And they don't put it on a billboard. I can assure you though, that there are multiple agencies that are now becoming aware of this and are pursuing an engagement.
Same time in parish is one of them. So we're not gonna get into how they got it, but they're going to, unpaid parking tickets. They're going after unpaid parking tickets. They want, uh, suppliers, I don't know which one it is, I think it's Broadgates and there's a few of them that are out there. They're, they're, they use. Uh, that room you use.
I, I understand what you just said about the, the mandated, the, the state auto mandated. My response to that would be, uh, they don't need to mandate it because people are mandated to pay your debt. And if this is a debt, it's already been mandated, that one must pay.
I'm just, you know, I'm just, you know, we, we make, we're, we're making strides with public relations. It's, that's, that's what's tearing me up, is that we're making strides and then here's an issue, man, that, that's gonna really, I don't know, I don't know, I have, it's not that, I don't know, you could pull it back, you know, with, I could stick it, you know, I wouldn't.
No, we're, we're here for that reason, we welcome these people.
Yeah, they go to Walmart, oh, Rouse's, or one of those places, they have to pay their bill. I mean, that's just the way, what it works. And we're probably asking people that, that are gonna get angry at us of asking them to pay it, you know? Well, some people don't like to pay their bills, but I think we're gonna have a good number that be willing to pay. If they don't pay it, oh, they're gonna pay a share.
And you're providing two warning notices of, we're engaging this, so you have an obligation. Please be forthcoming to pay it. The other thing is, the, the comment he used with me was, it's private public schooling.
Yeah.
You're required to pay for public schooling whether you use the service or not.
Okay.
And others deemed that they wish to do private schooling in addition to the public schooling obligation. So, uh, the, 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 the short answer is, and your original statement is, it's a mandate.
Alright, now, I'll add to this now. This is not, it does not, we still own the debt. And if someone wanted to say, will you, can you work with me, can you do something different? We own it and we could pull back all of it, or we could pull back one case. It's up to us, so if we get an individual that truly, uh, can beat the cri- a criteria, then it's still, we still own that right.
So what we're looking at is a hundred and eighty days from Corona's. Then we would have a.
Two letter campaign.
Two other notices, sixty days and another, another ten, thirty days, another ninety days from the one eighty.
That's just on Corona.
Yeah, so nine months till we turn it to O D R.
My suggestion would be on day one twenty one, you send your sixty day dollars.
Yes.
So that on day one eighty, it goes to collection.
Yeah.
That would be my.
Yeah, the answer is anything older than a hundred.
But those are the. So if, here's another question, if we turn everything over to O D R, would we still as a board, we, we wouldn't have to have these discussions on the debt forgiveness?
Correct.
And that's, we would, we have granted.
Yeah, or it's my understanding that O D R may engage with you and say, I have a payment plan that someone has offered, would you accept that?
Well, they do, the, there is the problem that they could pay a dollar a month. The O D R will take the dollar and we will get ninety cents, so they keep a thick ten percent until the bill's paid.
Right, so, so there is a method for the person that may owe the debt to negotiate terms of settlement with O D R.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's, that may be something that we didn't see, but, uh, so we're gonna still have to have some further discussions.
On.
On protocols, protocol parameters.
I don't think the board needs to have discussions on the protocol. I mean, the board.
No exceptions, I mean, every single debt is gonna, you know, after a hundred and eighty days is gonna get turned to, to O D R.
I don't see how we could do it any other way.
Yeah, I mean, you can't discriminate and say, this, this group of people, we're not gonna send it to O D R, this group, we all.
No, I mean, and I'd be everyone. And the problem is, even if you do it on the one case scenarios, eventually there's going to be an issue with we, you know, right, why him and not me? And what makes that person different than this person?
I think it has to be uniform in your application.
So basically, that each stay with that person that uses the services until they pass on it.
So to me, to, to frame it up, the board has to determine at what date do you recognize that this is a uh, debt to start the letter campaign process, which is a ninety day process. The second is, do you use a third party agency to do that two letter campaign or do you do it internally? Knowing that you could start one way and finish another way, you're not locked in when you make a decision. I would say we would agree to a resolution today and then develop those protocols for further discussion.
And, and, uh, but that's where I got a problem with developing the protocols. The board, once we approve these things, this turns to that. This is their procedures, we don't get into their daily business.
Absolutely, the other protocol I'm talking about is what is the trigger date for?
That would work, but how they go.
I agree with that, you're just setting the trigger date for the one twenty.
That's, that's, that's.
So, you know, Corona's has said a hundred and eighty days, they're not gonna get anything.
Right.
So we got Corona's, a hundred and eighty days, all this other stuff, there is no time when it's due today. We, you know, we got sent out the letters.
The last notice.
Sixty Corona's days.
For that ninety days, right? The last notice that Corona sends is that ninety days?
No, they, they chase it to the, to the.
To the end of a hundred and eighty days.
No, they chase it forever.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, they said they only send three notices, right?
Maybe.
Yeah, right, they send three notices, but they statistically at one hundred, one eighty one plus, the debt is pretty much, pretty much uncollectible. So you're, I believe, have the obligation of setting the trigger date to get it from Corona's to O D R.
Hundred eighty one days.
And I can modify the, the resolution to include that in there.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
So we need a resolution to amend this to a hundred and eighty one day.
Hundred eighty one day, we got one more if I know, I think we ought to talk about. It's so Corona's takes what the medics do in the field. And they get a, a, a P C R and P C R is sent to the loans. Corona's does what with it, they code it, and they generate a bill. And then they chase it for a hundred and eighty. I'm inclined to be fair to Corona's that says, since they do the P C R, they convert it, they code it, they bill it, they teach classes for us that if they generate the bill, I still think they, they need to get their income for that.
Yeah.
Even if, even if it's collected by O D R.
Yeah, I think they deserve it. They worked for the money. Now, there's.
Oh, yeah, they, they.
That's fair, you would not have a bill to submit to O D R if they didn't do that work.
Right.
And so you would be paying Corona's back from the actual collections a fixed amount for them initiating the work.
That's correct, so if we get fifty cents for a dollar.
And they pay after a hundred and eighty days, that, that, they still get.
Yeah, that would be landy after Corona's.
Yeah.
Can I, I, I'm just curious, wh- what would be the incentive for them to continue the chase of the money if they're gonna get it?
They clean this stuff up for ninety days, anything to do on ninety days, they're done, they're not taking it anyway. You know, they.
They don't do any more work after that point.
I think the only challenge with the part legal on this is can you pay an agency after it's been released from that agency, a, a service fee?
Yeah, I, I, we could talk to Corona's about.
I was about to say communicate with them, yeah, and find out how they feel on that.
Corona's about, I mean, I think today you could set the one eighty one trigger date and then do some follow up to say, if we collect ten dollars and we decide to give you fifty cents, can we legally do that if that debt has been transferred away from you?
Right, and then you to it and say, uh, once it's pulled, I would give you eight and a half percent of what we collect for you writing the bill.
Correct. Attention, I'm just, I just wanna be, make sure I understood.
So Corona's will invest effort up to ninety days for a collectionist, do I have that correct?
Roughly three letters.
That would, where. Amounts of ninety days, Calvin. So they would then hang on to that for another ninety days without doing anything.
They're gonna hang on to it indefinitely.
Well, I mean, for some reason, I think it's one twenty, not ninety, I think it's three letters, but it's still a hundred and twenty days. So I think there's something in that, so I think it's like the one. So my question would be, if they are going to get paid regardless, why, why don't they keep the, the debt there and not send it to the state?
Because they can't collect all of the state.
Yeah, they don't have the means and, and the.
To negotiate with the actual person to collect the debt. Same agency can go through outside measures to collect the debt.
Do all those things.
What if, if. What, if, if, if I owe the department, say a thousand dollars, and, and a hundred and eighty one days to the rears, Corona's would have to contact me and say, we need you to make a restitution in some type of payment man for that thousand dollar example. Here, the state says, you have a defined obligation of a thousand dollars back to District Three. We have other means to recover if you refuse to negotiate payment terms for us. So it's those other means of recovery that O D R has, that Corona's does not have.
That's, I understand, the best that Corona's could do is some sort of, uh, claims court. That's all we're saying, and they were, I guess, we got, we're going to fall back up, we're going to have to.
Yeah, and, and they, and there's no real recovery on that for them. Um, so, I mean, in the private sector, yes, that's essentially how, it gets placed with a third party debt collector. Um, those are the people, hopefully none of you get calls from, but they're very annoying and, um, and, you know, they're aggressive and trying to collect, but it's still all voluntary. Unless it's some sort of major debt that does get placed with some law firm that does do this, and they'll try and sue in the local court for the, that debt. So, you know, I, I, I think this is, whether you're trying to cover this tonight, the, the fee that you're willing to pay Corona's for what they do upfront, rather than just collect, you might want to consider making those two different things.
I'm blocking that.
They get eight and a half percent if they collect, maybe they get six and a half or five percent if, if, if they don't collect, but they did all this work upfront, that way, they, um, that way, you're paying them some of the service they did here.
Yeah.
And, um, and so I would, I'm saying maybe that's a, that's a game plan, it makes sense.
Also, I think you and I talked about it too, uh, I think maybe we should inform the daddy, that are, you know, that they will be turned over to Louisiana Department.
We have to.
Yeah.
Well, that's what.
Okay, yeah, those two letters. Yeah, uh, yeah, that's going to be the letter that we have to send, would it be appropriate? We can, I don't know, we can, no, you said it's got to come from boss, I'm saying, the, the, the letters have to be released from the agency saying that you have an outstanding collection, and it's overpraising, and we, unless you settle this, we're going to submit it to O D R. So they should get a bill from Corona's, then they should get a thirty day follow up, and a, a sixty day follow up, and, and this is my, maybe it's a little longer or something, and I think maybe it's a one twenty day follow up, some, for some reason, I think it's one twenty days. And, um, um, and when they get that one twenty, they'll also get a letter from the department that says.
Hundred and eighty, we don't pull it to a hundred and eighty.
You don't pull it, but we're going to send a letter at day one twenty one.
Yeah.
And we're going to send a letter at the day?
No, we're not.
We're.
We're going to do, we're going to do a hundred and, and a hundred and eighty one days is when we will send our first letter.
Oh, I thought you were going to send it at one twenty one, so you could transfer to day one eighty one.
No, the reason why is because there's a discussion about what's, uh, legally, when can you go after medical debt, right? So there's some, some guidance that's in there, and I think the guidance says a hundred and eighty days or something. There was really, uh, not very clear, uh, Louisiana law, federal laws, or there was, so we said a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty one.
I think. Right, but now you're pushing it to two seven.
Cause you're, you're, or two forty.
If we send the sixty day letter at day one eighty one, means we can't, O D R's not going to collect until day two forty, because it's a sixty day letter.
Well, basically, the, basically, they said you could not go after that debt until it had aged greater than a hundred and twenty days. There was no clarity as to how long you could let it sit before you turn it over. So if, if Corona said a hundred and eighty one days, we consider it basically uncollectible, could that be your trigger here to start the O D R process, knowing that you have sixty days internal effort before it technically goes?
That is buying concerns about people, right?
Yeah.
Who are given a, almost a year.
Yes.
To pay the bill.
Yeah.
And I looked at the names on this list, and I know these guys got money.
Yeah.
There's that, there's that, and there's the fact that if they're paying Corona's, if they call Corona's and set it up, it's not going to age. It's not, so, you know, if they call and say, look, can I, can I give you thirty bucks a month? It's not going to age to the one eighty, um, because they're making their payments.
And it doesn't.
Right, for O D R.
Right.
So does Corona's manage that debt, if that's the arrangement, until it's paid? As long as they're getting paid, it could be two years, or three years, and, and manage that for us at the eight percent whatever.
Yeah, if, if at some point they start paying and they decide, oh, I'm not going to pay no more, then it will start to.
Then it'll turn over.
Right, and like I said, if they remain, they'll, they'll be ten dollars a month. They're paying the bills.
Right. So, and a lot of people know that, there's a lot of people who know that you make a five dollar payment.
Quite into a hospital bill, if you got a ten thousand dollar hospital bill, in a lot of cases, if they pay a hundred dollars a month, the hospital doesn't put them in a collection agency.
Right, yeah.
So you're in that same mentality here.
And that's where I'm not, so sensitive to the folks who would get mad, like, folks would ding their, they got a bill and they go to the casino.
Yeah.
Hear what I'm saying, they go to the casino, and they owe us some money, and they hit at the casino.
Yeah.
And they go get mad because we take some, a few of their dollars because they're at the casino and owning the restaurant.
You know, I have to, I have to get this discussion.
But to add to what the chairman said, is they're at the casino and they got dinged because they did not negotiate with Corona's, or did not negotiate with O D R. So it's, it's, they have an outstanding obligation, they've.
They know what.
Acknowledge.
They know it.
They made no effort on. No, so just to, and then I'll put it to bed for me, because I'm still fundamentally confused. If it's a hundred dollar debt, that debt goes to a hundred and twenty days, we can turn it over to the state. And that's, I'm talking about regulations wise, not when we decide, but.
Correct.
A hundred and twenty days will be the first available day, available date. And we want to give Corona's an extra sixty days.
Yeah.
Because it's grace, we're giving grace to people who need.
So if you look at their charts, right, they do very good to that first ninety day span. But there's still, it's still dropped, right? So even at a hundred and twenty days, people are still paying. When it gets out to that hundred and eighty one days, they got nothing.
But why would it be more advantageous to keep it with Corona's over the last ninety days?
Oh, we could, no, we could, we could pull it out on the way I want it. We could, that's what y'all.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand what, what the advantage, is it ju, if, if, if we're just, you know, being graceful with the, the, then, then I get that, if that's what that is. But if there's another reason, I'd like to know.
I don't have any other reason, other than the fact it completely covers us with any ambiguity of the law of whether you can turn to collect on a medical debt.
And also think you have a. Well, no, because it would be, right, we would have the hundred and twenty, and then it would be turned over to the state. Hopefully it goes past the hundred and eighty days. I, I think your argument is, are you willing to extend your constituents a sixty day goodwill window that you don't require to do?
If that's what that is, I could, I could agree with that, I'm just making sure that that's what that is.
That's really what you're saying, is I'm going to give you an extra sixty days goodwill window before we engage with O D R and start that formal process.
No, you're giving them a hundred and twenty.
Well, no, I'm saying the goodwill is the one twenty to one eighty by this department. The formality of the one eighty one trigger starts the O D R process of the two notifications, and then it goes to the O D R for collections. So you've really given them a, a, a sixty day window of good faith here for latent terms. And then you've given them another sixty day window of notified good faith, that I've sent you these two letters that you owe us money, failure to, uh, recognize it, then convert you to O D R. So you've really given someone four months of good faith.
That's what I would.
Interaction, does that make sense?
A hundred percent, I just was, I wanted to make that clear, that that's what that is, as opposed to regulatory.
No, it's a great, to an extent, you know. Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, so, to me, your, your trigger is the one twenty, uh, or the one eighty one, which is a sixty day internal good faith. That's, that's what I would point to latent terms.
But during that sixty day window, it's still placed with Corona's.
Correct.
So Corona's is going to, you know, take the phone calls if they call or whatever, and.
Or negotiate some sort of plan. So really, Corona's has it for two, for, uh, two forty.
Two forty, yeah.
Yeah. And, um.
I'm good, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I. So we want to. I think the debate was good, you know, I, I needed to voice that, I mean, uh.
Oh, so what everyone you said is right. You did, I'm glad you brought it, I'm glad you're so good to speak about it.
So from a technical standpoint, we just need to have an amendment proposed to this resolution to have the trigger date to move it from Corona's to the O D R process, I'll call that.
Yeah.
At a hundred and eighty one days. So, I mean, we call it the O D R process, that engages the district's process in the O D R.
And the district will develop a process.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is, it's beyond our scope.
Yeah.
To set their process.
Good.
Good.
Yeah, I'm good.
I got one eighty one written here if they amend it.
All right, so we have a lot of discussion on it, uh, while we're ready to vote.
Okay.
All right.
Always that clear.
Anything else?
I'm good, good.
Okay, so, all in favor of a motion to approve twenty twenty six zero five, approve the agreement with Louisiana Office of Debt Recovery with amendments, uh, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion carries. Uh, we have a.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody don't want to go home?
Steve, you don't want to say that? I just got a text, that's it.